Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly spirit be with us tonight as we deliberate city business. Give us wisdom to make the proper and fair decisions. Bless everyone present tonight. Give them peace, health, and happiness. We ask for all of this in your holy name. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett. Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Here. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of October the 20th, 2021 pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is ordered. Counsel, Councilman Fawcett? Councilman Goldberg? I have a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion in the motion? There are none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett. Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the April 21st, 2021 work session and regular meeting and April 30th, 2021 special meeting is the next item for consideration and the motion is in order. Vice Mayor Bennett. Councilman Goldberg. A second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett. Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one special presentation tonight, and it's in recognition of Cyber Security Awareness Month. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. Governor Norfolk has designated the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month. Regina Chandler, interim Director of Information Technology, will introduce our special guest this evening. Who will provide a briefing on Internet crimes and prevention. Regina?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and staff. As the manager said, the month of October is recognized as Cyber Security Awareness Month by our governor as well as entities across the country. Therefore, we thought it would be fitting to invite our partner, Special Agent Eric Goodmanson from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, who is going to provide a briefing on the types of internet crimes reported to the Internet Crime Complaint Center of 2020, as well as how their local branch is an available resource to localities in dealing with cyber incidents.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. City Council, it's an honor to be able to speak to you tonight. I'm going to cover business email compromise and romance fraud. If you have any questions throughout, feel free to ask them. But as Ms. Chandler said, my name is Eric Goodmanson. I'm a special agent with the FBI. I'm assigned to the Norfolk Field Office right nearby. I'm on a squad that handles cybercrime and transnational organized crime. Two things that are very closely related. And now, business email compromise, if you don't happen to, you know, work in a business, it doesn't matter, you may know someone in your life, you know, family, friend, coworker, who has a business or, you know, just works for a business, right? That's very broad. I'd love to be able to save someone the loss of all the money that they worked hard for. Similarly, may or may not be married. If you're married, you might think, oh, I could never fall for a romance scam, but you probably know someone who could. So feel free to tell your friends, family, coworkers about the things I'm going to be talking about tonight. I, you know, this is one of these things where prevention is the best medicine. It's really tough to get money back after it's been lost from some kind of scam like this. And if I can just help a couple people out, it'll make me very happy. So business email compromise and romance scams, why do we care? Everyone sees this photo here. This is a Mercedes G-Wagon, as everyone calls it. I'm sure most of us in the room would love to have one. We probably wouldn't spend our own money on it. It's just a lot of money, right? I assume most of us, even if we're very generous, would not buy one for one of our best friends or family members or anything like that. And we certainly wouldn't buy it for a complete stranger. I took that photo a couple of years ago in Nigeria. And that was seized from a scammer who took money from Americans who worked very hard to make it, stole it from them, and then bought, you know, what they call the machine, this Mercedes. That's kind of the pinnacle of what a lot of these scammers are trying to buy with money that they've stolen from Americans. So the two, the two in red here, BEC as we call it, and romance scams are the majority of what I'll be talking about. But everyone else in their day-to-day lives encounters a lot of other scams and typically doesn't fall for it, but people do all the time. And it works. That's why people do it. So I'll just touch on a few of these. So tech support fraud, that's kind of when someone calls you up and says, hey, I work for Microsoft and you have a problem with your computer. Do these things and I'll help you fix it. Don't do it. You're being targeted. If you have some kind of computer issue, take it to Best Buy, take it to your local computer shop. Don't deal with someone on the phone who's basically cold calling you and hoping you fall for a trick. With rental properties, you know, try to deal with people in person. Don't, don't send money to someone across the country before you've seen an apartment or something like that, because you may show up on move-in day and find out someone else lives there and the person you paid doesn't own the apartment. Government impersonation, I'm sure people here have had this happen to them where someone calls and says, hey, I'm with Customs and Border Protection, or I'm with Social Security, or I'm with the FBI, and you're, you have an arrest warrant. I'm going to arrest you if you don't pay me $5,000 or some of that money. That's not how law enforcement works. No one's going to do that. Don't pay. Lottery fraud, you know, you haven't won the Facebook lottery. There are many different schemes like this where people call you up or send you an email or an IM, and, you know, promise you something that's too good to be true. And when you hear that, it should be your clue to stop talking to them. It's a scam. Ransomware, that's a big issue. I'm not really going to talk about it much today, but it's super important to have regular updates of your software on your computer network, whether you're a business or something else. And then also back up your data separately. Because if someone executes ransomware on your system, which is basically like if you came home from being out of the house and someone locked up all your possessions and said, you can't have anything until you pay me, that's essentially what's happening with ransomware on a computer. If you have your things backed up, you can pretty much just restore everything and ignore that person. So Ms. Chandler mentioned the IC3, that's the Internet Crime Complaint Center. That's actually a part of the FBI. And it really aids us in seeing what kind of crime is being committed on the internet throughout the country and the world. So if you ever become a victim of some kind of cybercrime, I would ask you to go to ic3.gov, click on the red button in the middle of the screen to file a complaint, and that gives us visibility of what's going on, so we can dedicate our resources to the places where it's needed most. And simultaneously, feel free to call your local authorities, call, call an FBI field office. Norfolk is the closest one here. We really want to do our best to help people and, you know, prevent, prevent crime, like I'm trying to do right now, and then help people recover and catch the bad guys who did it. So IC3 puts out a report every year that talks about the scope and value of all these crimes. It gets worse every year. The report's not out for this year since we're not done. But in 2020, it was $4.2 billion worth of losses were reported. And really, that value is greater because everyone doesn't report to IC3. Here's a breakdown. It's pretty tough to read, I'm realizing. Business email compromise is the biggest one out of that 4.2 million, sorry, 4.2 billion. It's almost 2 billion. And then right behind that is the romance scam at 600 million. So they're both, they're both very important. It's really easy to tell yourself, this will never happen to me. But I talk to people all the time who thought that and it happened. And they're very smart people, too. It can happen to anyone. All right, so what is business email compromise really? So it's basically breaking into someone's email account, looking around, probably being patient, and figuring out how to use that information to steal someone's money. Most of the time, the person is looking for a legitimate payment or purchase to be, to be made. And they'll try and get that money diverted somewhere else. So they'll send out an email to try and trick you into doing that. Someone is typically going to be impersonated. And to make it seem legitimate, there might be a signature block for someone that you're used to dealing with. There may be a warning about not falling victim to fraud. And the reason for that is it seems more legitimate, right? If you warn people about fraud in the email that is fraud, you're more likely to think it's real. And then that email could come directly from someone's email account that's been compromised. Or it could come from an account that's got a little bit of a variation from it. Someone created that account to fool people. Or they could do what's called spoofing. And you encounter that all the time when people robo-call you. The number that appears to be calling you is not really where the phone, phone call is coming from. People do that with the email as well. All right, so this, this guy on the left is on the cover of Forbes Africa. His name is Obinwan Okiki. And he was named one of the 30 people under 30 years old to watch by Forbes Africa. He was the CEO of this company Invictus Group. And two years ago, he was arrested by the FBI in Washington DC for an $11 million fraud scheme that he was running. You guys know the company Caterpillar that's local? The parent company of Caterpillar, Unitrak, fell victim to this guy's scheme. And there he is on the bottom right, you know, arrested by the FBI. Essentially, what he did is he broke into the email account of the CEO of Unitrak. And he used that access to do research, figure out how they operate, and then send out emails to people within the company saying, hey, I need you to make a purchase or send money to this place for me. And because research has been done, the emails look, look good, the CEO is emailing someone, people do it. And it wasn't all at one time. There were many, many transfers done. But $11 million was lost from that scheme. So he's, he's serving 10 years in prison right now. So how did they get in? How did they break into this person's email account? Most commonly, what they're doing is they're sending what's called a phishing email, which I'm sure you've all encountered. And they're, they're basically trying to get this user to give up their username and password. Really commonly, it's, hey, you have an issue with your account. You need to log in and take care of it. So you'll go log in on a fake website that looks like a real website. And then you'll be passed through to the legitimate website and you'll never know what happened. But now someone has your username and password. You know, and then the alternative is they try to guess your password, which is called basically brute force. It takes a long time. If you have a good password, but if you have a bad password or something super common, they might be able to guess it and get right in. Another way is you always hear about these breaches. Companies have breaches all the time. Your password might be out there because of a breach and someone can use it. And if it's not even associated with a certain account, if you use the same password across all those accounts, people try those and they, you know, it's a numbers game, but they get into accounts because of that. So who, who gets targeted by this stuff? I'm not a CEO. It's not going to affect me, right? Nope. If you have any kind of visibility with, with transactions in email, you're a great target. You could be a CEO, very true, or some kind of supervisor, manager. You could be in procurement, that's huge. You could be paying employees. You could be an office administrator. And then, you know, a couple sectors that get hit pretty bad with this are real estate and law firms. So don't click on email links. Everyone hears that, right? People still click on links. You really need to give somebody a call before you click it. Or go walk down the hall, talk to them and say, did you send me this? Don't just click things without, without thinking. I mentioned it already earlier, but you need to make sure you have complex passwords for important accounts. So your email, your bank, you need, you need really secure, long, at least 12 characters, passwords with upper and lowercase letters, symbols. You know, for your Netflix, it's not, not super critical, right? If someone gets in your account, they can watch your TV. But if someone's in your email, they can pretty much reset any account you have. And emails are so personal, they can, they can see everything about you and really cause a headache for you. There's something called two-factor authentication or multi-factor authentication. I'm sure everyone here with a Facebook account is using that. But it's really surprising that people's corporate email accounts frequently will not have anything other than a username and password. So if you get that, or if you give that up to a bad guy, they can go log in from across the world and you can't stop them. But two-factor or multi-factor authentication would be like if you get a text on your phone when you log in and you get a PIN that you have to type in. Having that phone with a PIN or a token makes that username and password worthless to a criminal. So that's great. It's really a cheap way to solve a lot of problems. Now, it's, it's hard to be super aware all the time of, is this a fraudulent email that just popped into my email box? You know, you just, you just can't be that attentive all the time. But if you were about to make a payment or send somebody's personal information out there, it really makes sense to just take two minutes, talk to somebody, and avoid any problems. You know, that, that two minutes you lost could be the difference between you or your company having $100,000 or a million dollars or something like that. People lose a lot of money from this. So pick up the phone, walk down the hall, meet up, talk about it. And then like I mentioned earlier, a lot of the time, when you get this, this fraudulent email from someone, it'll have a signature block from someone you are used to dealing with. There's a phone number in there, which usually there is not. But if there isn't, is there, sorry, if there is a phone number in there, don't call that number. That could be a bad guy, you know, using that as cover. So really, you know, verify the number you're going to call to confirm. Don't, don't just converse back and forth with a scammer. Hopefully, everyone can read that now. Same, same thing I just said, but it's really important. Just always pick up the phone and call or meet in person. Don't email back and forth with a bad guy. I've talked to many victims who wired their money to someone they've never met. And the bank actually asked them, what is this for? What are you doing? You know, why are you sending it this way? And they'll email back and forth with the bad guy who has every answer, because this is their job, that's how they make a living. And they can convince people, sitting in front of someone at the bank, that this is legitimate. And, you know, it's, it's really tough. They, you know, they lose life savings sometimes. So I mentioned, you could get an email from someone that's pretending to be the, the real account. So let's say you're dealing with a mortgage company. If their, if their company name is something mortgage, they might create an email account that's mortgage, but instead of an M at the front, it's an RN. And if you're not paying really close attention, you'll miss it. Similarly, you know, you could spell law, but with two Vs instead of W. And we're in such a rush, right? All the time, we're busy doing things. You can miss that and be talking to a scammer. And they can convince you to do something you really will regret. People will add in extra letters. It's really easy to miss. And then if you're dealing with some company or person that doesn't have the, you know, I'm assuming Suffolk has a Suffolk dot something email domain. But if Suffolk was using Gmail, you could just change it to Yahoo and most people probably wouldn't notice that. Or if your username is Mike145, if you changed it to Mike154, most people probably wouldn't know that is, is not the right person, unless that was something really, you know, sticks in your mind, like you know their birthday and that's what it is or something like that. I mentioned earlier, just like phone numbers, people can spoof the email header. So they can make it look like that email is coming from somebody who it isn't. And we'll go through a couple of different examples. Everyone with me so far? If you have questions, feel free to shout them out. So let's say you suspect that someone's in your email account. What do you do? Well, you can call your IT people. That's a great idea. You can also go and change your password right away if you're able to. Log out everyone else that's on the account. That's, that's an option in just about every webmail. Another thing you can do is check for rules. So forwarding rules, deleting rules. What bad guys will do typically, after they break into an account, they want to get out so that no one notices that they've been in there. And what they may do is forward all the emails that you're getting and sending out to another email account that they control, like a Gmail account or something. And let's, let's say they convince you to make a payment to their bank account. And the bank account that's expecting a legitimate payment doesn't get it. What are they going to do? They, they may email you and say, hey, where's my payment? They may have a rule set up that says, if I get an email from so-and-so, that email should go to the junk folder. And that, then you'll never notice it until it's too late. So they're just, they're just trying to keep, keep the ploy going so they have time to move the money enough that we can't recover it. So these are all important tips here. The first one I already talked about, it's just so important, having more than one way to authenticate a person, not just username and password. Organizations need to, and people with computers at home, patch your computer, you know, install all the updates that are available. Use, you know, antivirus and spyware. For, for organizations, make, make sure that employees can't just make changes to the computer without having an administrator do it for them. Because if they click on a link, it may be installing malware or something like that that you just wouldn't want to be allowed to be installed. A lot of the time, you'll see people having an email chain that says, external mail, be, be aware, or something like that. If you flag email, it's not coming from your organization, that may open your eyes that something's wrong. And I mentioned having separate backups. That's, that's a ransomware thing. That's a whole other issue. But, you know, keeping your network up to date, having separate backups will just enable you, if you do become a victim of ransomware, to recover much more quickly. And you won't have to pay anyone to get your data back if you already have it somewhere else. Probably need to speed up a little bit. Here's an example of someone spoofing. You may, you may end up with a reply box that says it's going to someone else than what you expected. Other times, you'll only notice it once you hit reply and you actually pay attention to who the email's going to. Here's an example where someone's created a new, new domain. It's that RN instead of an M for mortgage. And then here's an example. It's probably tough for a lot of you to read just because of the size. But this is, this is a real-world example. I've changed the names of people and email accounts. But this is actual wording that has defrauded a lot of people. This would be if you were going to buy a house on Friday. And on Tuesday, you get an email that says, hey, to avoid any issues at closing, you're going to need to wire this amount of money today. And by the way, make sure at closing you bring your photo ID. And, you know, let me know and we'll, we'll get on with this. So it, it looks like it's coming from the person you deal with at your real estate company. It's the right, it's the right amount of money that you're going to be putting down on the house. And the timing is right. So a lot of people will go and, and send that wire. And it goes to somebody that it does not belong to. And then on Friday, when you show up at your closing, someone says, all right, do you have your check? And that person will say, no, I wired the money. And everyone kind of starts looking at each other and realizes that something went horribly wrong. And it's, it's just really tough to get that money back. Here's another, another example. This is another CEO-type thing where someone in a position of power is asking for, not really even a favor, directing someone, hey, I need to make a payment. Can you do it for me? Can you do it for me?" And so, the email account doesn't make sense, it was not the right organization, but they have the right name of the person, and they had this disclaimer at the bottom about how this email is legally privileged, and it says, "Sent from my T-Mobile device." So it seems like, hey, your CEO's on the run and he really needs you to do him a quick And then for, you know, people saying, "I'm not going to fall for this," you can read what's up on the screen, and all the letters are jumbled, but pretty much everybody has no issue converting that into words in their brain and reading it. So it's just something that shows you how easy it is to miss things. Our brains are just wired to go past it. And everyone that has seen this before probably got it in a forwarded email. All right, who here knows what this is? So Catfish is a TV show. It's super popular, it's had many seasons, there's no shortage of stories for them to run on this show. Essentially, it's people who have been dating someone online that they're realizing is not who they say they are. And this guy fell for that once, now he's the host of a show, and he kind of investigates and figures out what's going on. The difference between what he's doing and what I'm typically doing is, the people on that show, you know, they just find out that they're kind of in an online relationship with someone down the street that, you know, for whatever reason they don't like, you know, they don't get along in real life, but they get along great online. When things come to me on this topic, it's because someone lost their life savings after they fell for someone representing themselves as someone else. So a romance scam, that's essentially what Catfishing is. These scammers go online, they steal the Facebook photos or dating profile photos of some good-looking person, and then they create their own profile with that information. And they'll spend a lot of time talking to different people, grooming them. Usually, these people are, you know, they're down on their luck, maybe they got divorced, maybe they're widowed now, they're lonely, and now this person is talking to them every day, all the time, and eventually, they start asking for money. It's really advanced fee fraud. So we have these lottery scams, right, where you won the lottery, but you have to pay your taxes upfront? That's an advanced fee fraud. With these romance scams, typically, the person these victims are talking to claims to be very wealthy, and they're just having some kind of issue that needs money to resolve, but they're going to pay you right back, because they're rich. And by the way, you're going to get married soon anyway, so you're going to be sharing this fortune. So here's an example. This is a person that a victim was talking to, supposedly. Supposedly, a 57-year-old, he's a jeweler, he travels around the world, he's buying gold and jewelry, and he ends up running into issues with customs and has to pay all these fees. And because he's away from the US, he can't deal with these things, so he's got somebody on the hook to help him out. And I'll show you what really is going on here. So this is a guy, his name's Richard Dorpe, he's from Ghana, and the FBI arrested him in January. He's serving 40 months in prison now for wire fraud. But what happened is he tricked a recent widow that lives in Chesapeake. She's 68 years old, tricked her out of $300,000, more than $300,000. And that sounds like a huge amount of money, and it certainly is, but there are people out there that lose over $1 million, you know, the people that have saved up their entire lives, and, you know, they just end up losing it all. And this victim was met on our time, so it's a website for people who are over 50 who want to date. So this, you know, Americans are typically targeted, and it happens to people all around the world, but Americans are a prime target. You know, our wealth is perceived to be very high. And then they'll target older Americans, just because they have the greatest likelihood of having amassed, you know, a lot of money for retirement and things like that. And a lot of people think, you know, one sex is the only target, but really, everybody gets targeted. Keep your comms. We're almost there. So, you know, you can have a large age disparity. Frequently, the people are in another country, supposedly. I mentioned they're very wealthy. And then, you'll be talking constantly via text, but, you know, sometimes people chat on the phone, but pretty much never video chat, because they don't want to reveal who they are. Frequently, they'll say they're on an oil rig or they're deployed with the military. Over time, they'll request things like wire transfers, gift cards, cryptocurrency, bulk cash in the mail, or phones, some kind of electronics. And they may give you all these reasons why it's legit. They'll send you their IDs, their driver's license, passports. They'll give you fake banking websites that show you that they have all this money. They'll give you certificates, basically sending all their wealth to you, putting it in your name, and it's just, it's all bogus. So, you know, the way to defeat these romance scams is just never send anyone any money. After, you know, if you can't meet that person in a couple of weeks, it's a scam. People get themselves into trouble because they send money, and it's a small amount to begin with, but as they go down the road and this person has more and more, more and more reasons why you need to send money, it gets bigger and bigger and it's hard to back out of. So people kind of just fully commit to this idea that they're going to end up happy and rich in the end. When people send you these profile photos and everything, you can run a reverse image search, you can use TinEye or Google Images, you can do research on it and see where else that pops up. Here's an example, here's a fake passport. That photo obviously is not how people take passports. And in just a few seconds, you can determine that that picture is on a whole bunch of different websites, and it's also being called out as fraud, used as a dating scam. So, you know, when people send money to somebody else that didn't deserve it, they're, you know, they're typically going to say, "Hey, well, go arrest this guy who stole my money." We would love to be able to do that, except other people are being recruited to handle the money for these bad guys. So they can't get the money to Nigeria or Ghana, wherever they live, right away. They have to send it to somebody else in the US, and that person will probably send it to somebody else, and then it'll make its way overseas. And the people who are doing it, these money mules, sometimes there are other victims of romance scams or something like that. It'll frequently be somebody, you know, who just has no idea what's going on. There are plenty of people who do know, and we try to prosecute those people, but it's just very difficult. All right, and then, again, if you become a victim, call your bank, let them know you need to do a recall. Time is of the essence. Call the FBI, I'll do my best to try and get the money back as well. Report it on ic3.gov so we can see what's going on globally in our country. And then make sure you change your password for your email or your bank account, and check for the rules on your email account if applicable. Here's a few resources. If you go to FBI.gov, you can click on scams and safety, and then common scams and crimes, and there is a detailed write-up and videos on every kind of scam you can think of. It's a really great resource for you. And it's, you know, it's actually entertaining to read. There's a lot of things out there that you may not be aware of. And then lastly, if you, you know, I can't give you a link to click on, right, but you could write this down, Glitterbomb Trap Catches Phone Scammer on YouTube. And there's a 20-minute video that's really entertaining and worth watching, it talks about a lot of different scams and how they're interrelated. I think it'd be something you'd really enjoy and get a lot out of. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take them. I'm sorry I took a little bit more time than I wanted to, and probably you wanted to, but hopefully I helped somebody out.
Thank you very much for your special, for your presentation, Special Agent. You put out a lot of information to the public, and hopefully, they'll take the opportunity to review that. Cybercrime is a serious concern for all of us, but in a nutshell, it seems like never give out your personal information if you don't know who you're talking to. Make sure you verify who you're dealing with. Normally, if it's too good to be true, it probably is not, and protect your passwords.
Absolutely.
So, I think I did the Reader's Digest version, but we got everything else in there. But we certainly do appreciate it, and we are kind of, you know, running late, so I think we're going to forego questions for you this evening. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. At this time, we'll consider removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items that members of city council wish to remove them from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to remove item number 13 from the consent agenda.
And approve the remainder of the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion to remove consent agenda item 13 for later consideration and approval of the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Johnson.
I'll second that, please.
We have a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing the nod, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
No.
Councilmember Goldberg, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember William.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of 6 to 2, with Councilmembers Fawcett and Goldberg voting in opposition.
Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, and any speakers at this time.
Yes, we do have one non-agenda speaker at this time, excuse me, one agenda speaker at this time, Tushar Murgody, 6305, Wayleyville Boulevard, representing South, regarding consent agenda item number 13, a resolution adopting the Department of Parks and Recreation master plan update.
Good evening, everyone. It's 6301 Wayleyville Boulevard, not 6305. Anyway, quickly, Parks and Recreation, let me concentrate on Wayleyville, okay? Since I'm from there. I talked to one of the firemen next door, they said it'd be nice if you brought up a suggestion in the council meeting about putting a walking track or jogging track, whatever you call it, in the first field right behind my house, because they need something to jog around, walk around, you know. They usually run around in, around the fire station, which, you know, would help if they would put it over there. Put some, couple of benches there, they took out the old playground, which was okay, because it was all rusty and everything. They need to either replace that or make some good use of that place. I'm very happy to know that they got the dogs to be training, but that probably will be, I'm hoping, on the second field away from my house. These are the, I guess you can call them the drug-staffing dogs, you know, it's worth it, you know, we want to keep the drugs away from the street. Also, just to give you an update, for the last 10 years or so, I'm not exactly sure how long, we used to have a library bus come there, I believe it's part of Parks and Recreation, I guess. No more buses, they don't come anymore there. No bus service there. Yes, there is a rec center now, the old Robertson School. You have to still pay to go there, and of course, for people like me, there's no bus service there. And for younger kids who don't drive, they still have to pay, but there's nothing there. The senior services thing, the senior thing is closed, completely gone ever since COVID came. Nothing is going on for the seniors. No yoga classes, no nothing, okay? But the only thing we can do is go and play, shoot some pool in the pool table, and that's probably it, or use the gym, for which you have to pay extra. The younger kids, they have to pay extra, they do have a basketball court inside the building, but, you know, usually they're out there in the evenings and, you know, I don't know, somebody will have to drive them there, they can't walk that far. Mr. Chandler, I believe, said, mentioned about the dog training, which is okay. He said that, well, there'll be more police coming in and out of Wayleyville, and that will caution the people from speeding. I'm looking forward to it, I hope, I hope it's in a proper way. I don't want to get off the subject, because it's all Parks and Recreation, I'm going to talk about speeding later on as a non-agenda speaker. My thing is, Wayleyville has been neglected. That Robertson, if we that school had not closed, we would never have had a rec center there, okay? That's about the only thing that's happened good in Wayleyville in the last 20 years, other than a blinking light at the fire station, which was needed anyway. I am going to mention Mr. Dooman, if you don't mind. Do I have time? How much time do I have, sir, ma'am?
A minute and 54 seconds.
Okay, that's about two minutes. Mr. Dooman, you mentioned about Ronald Reagan in your last speech, remember? About respect and responsibility, remember, in the last meeting? You know, I am going to make it quick. I'm not here to insult you or anything, don't get me wrong. Donald Rumsfeld, if you remember the name, was the Secretary of Defense at that time, not at Reagan's time, but afterwards. And he, when we had the second Iraq war, Gulf War, to get rid of Saddam Hussein, okay? Completely. Anyway, the reason I bring it up is relevant, is because he went all the way to Iraq, and a young soldier told him, "Hey, Mr. Rumsfeld, sir, we need armor plated on the bottom of the, you know, the vehicles, we, a lot of IEDs are killing us." You know, he just shrugged his shoulder and said, "There's nothing I can do." Yet Saddam, for one of the religious ways, he had a three-day ceasefire, he said, "Let's do ceasefire for religious reasons." At that time, troops from New Zealand, there were only 500 troops, they went across the border to Kuwait, got the armor plated, put, and came back within that 48 hours. You know, the New Zealand people, they care, there's only a population of 5 million, but they cared about the soldiers, okay? They didn't take a penny from us, okay? My point is that responsibility and respect goes hand in hand, okay? The phrase, "It is what it is," is wrong, okay? We should just throw our shoulders and say, "It is what it is." No, it is not what it is. You can do better. Thank you very much, sir.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, please present the consent agenda items for consideration.
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate fiscal year 2021, 2022, community development block grant and home investment partnership programming funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Aviation in support of easement acquisition services for an obstruction removal project at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Item number nine, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Technology Trust Fund. Item number 10, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Suffolk Sheriff's Department. Item number 11, in ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds within and from the general fund to cover expenses related to the payroll schedule modification to payment in arrears. Item number 12, in ordinance to accept and appropriate state and federal funds for Suffolk Public Schools. And item number 14, a resolution supporting the reconstruction of the King's Highway Bridge and requesting support of the Virginia Department of Transportation and securing funding to complete design and construction.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item seven, the city has received an award from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $905,178, which includes $504,359 in community development block grant program funds, and $40819 in home investment partnership program funds. In compliance with the FY2122 Annual Action Plan, the CBG funds will be used for program administration, program activities that provide services to low-to-moder income families. The home funds will provide services, similar services, to families who are part of the Western Tidewater Home Consortium. Suffolk is the lead agency in the Western Tidewater Home Consortium, which includes the cities of Suffolk and Franklin, and the counties of Alawite and Southampton. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the Consolidated Grants Fund budget revenues and expenditures by $905,000. an award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of nine-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, which includes five-hundred-and-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars in community development block grant program funds, and four-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars in home investment partnership program funds. In compliance with the FY-2122 Annual Action Plan, the CBG funds will be used for program administration, program activities that provide services to low-to-moder income families. The home funds will provide services, similar services, to families who are part of the Western Tidewater Home Consortium. Suffolk is the lead agency in the Western Tidewater Home Consortium, which includes the cities of Suffolk and Franklin, and the counties of Alawite and Southampton. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the Consolidated Grants Fund budget revenues and expenditures by nine-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. A required twenty-five percent of local match to the home grant fund will be achieved through in-kind services. Item eight, the city has received thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars from the Virginia Department of Aviation for easement acquisition services for obstruction removal project at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the Capital Projects Fund budget revenues and expenditures by thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. A local match in the amount of nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars is required, which is provided for in the FY-2122 Aviation Fund budget. Item nine, the city has received ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars in FY-22 Technology Trust Funds from the Virginia Compensation Board to be used by the Clerk of the Circuit Court for expenses related to the conversion records for years eighteen sixty-six through nineteen seventy-three. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues of the general fund by ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and no local match is required. In regards to item ten, the Virginia Assembly appropriated during the 2021 special session to provide a one-time, three-thousand-dollar hazard pay bonus to state-supported sworn sheriff deputies. The city has received sixty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars from the Compensation Board of Virginia to provide the hazard pay bonuses to twenty state-s sworn sheriff deputies, including the sheriff. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the general fund sheriff's department operating budget by the sixty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars. No local match is required. In regards to item eleven, at the city council's June 2nd meeting, staff reached city council on modifications to the city's payroll schedule by having payroll payments issued in arrears. Now, this modification was implemented as part of the August 15th, 2021 pay period. In order to keep the employees' paychecks hold during the transition period, the cost implement of the payroll schedule modification was approximately 1.9 million. Funds were made available within the general fund as eligible safe, public safety salary expenses were moved to the CARES Act grant, freeing up the general fund dollars to, to allow us to do the arrears. In regards to item twelve, public, Suffolk Public Schools has received funding in the amount of thirty-two-million-four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars from state and federal CARES Act and American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan, or Act Plan, excuse me, or Plan Act, excuse me. The funds are scheduled to be used for information technology, professional development, mitigation of learning loss and instruction, special education, roof replacements at Oakland, Hillpoint, Macben Jr., Creekside, Northern Shores, and Southwestern Elementary Schools, and HVAC improvements at Elephant Fork Elementary. Adoption of the ordinance is necessary to accept and appropriate the funds within the schools FY-2122 operating fund budget. In regards to item fourteen, excuse me, during city council's October 6 regular session, the Director of Public Works provided a staff report outlining staff's recommendation for the reconstruction of the King's Highway Bridge. In securing the funds for, future funds for design and construction, it is requested a supporting resolution is adopted by city council.
If there are no questions about any of the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
Councilman Fawcett.
Second the motion.
We have a second from Councilman Fawcett. I do have one question before we move forward, and that's in regards to item twelve. And I was just, I had noticed that a lot of this is for replacement of roofs, and I was wondering if we had any information as to why the roof at Southwestern Elementary needed to be replaced when it was a fairly recently built school, and if you don't have that information, I understand. But I would like to get that information.
Okay. We would have reach out and get more detail, detailed information on that. And speaking with school representatives this morning during CIP meeting, it was our understanding the existing roof may had some issues with leaks, but I'd have to get more detailed information for you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bennett, a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 130 West Washington Street, zoning map thirty-four G eighteen A parcel three oh four, account number three five one four five one zero zero zero. This is CUP 2021 dash seventeen. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Bob Gumas, interim director of planning and community development, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Presented for your consideration is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub, the West Washington Street Hookah Bar and Lounge at 130 West Wash, West Washington Street. As designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the property is located within the central growth area, mixed-use core use district. The property is located in the heart of downtown Suffolk, and is zoned CBD, Central Business District, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The proposed business will be located on the ground floor retail space of a two-story commercial structure, of which the second floor has been developed as residential apartments, and is not a part of the, be utilized as a part of this application and request. The business will provide tobacco products, food, and alcohol to patrons, and will include a kitchen, dining area, and designated smoking area. Public parking and public utilities and services in the area are available and adequate to meet the needs of the proposed business. With the inclusion of the conditions included in the proposed approving ordinance, staff believes that the proposed use will comply with both the goals of the Comprehensive Plan and the criteria established in the Unified Development Ordinance. These conditions include the installation of sound abatement system to mitigate the potential adverse impacts to the residents living above on the second floor. Also, as presented, the proposed conditions include conditions that city council customarily has established for similar uses. These include limitations on the hours of operation between, from nine AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and nine AM to twelve midnight, Fridays and Saturdays. This also includes the inclusion of a digital surveillance and alarm system. In closing, this request has been forwarded to the city council by the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I and other staff members would be available after your public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and this would be to speak in favor of?
Good evening. My name is Deidra Gillis. I will be located at the 130 West Washington Street for the Hookah Bar and Lounge. I'm, I'm requesting that they revisit the, the result of the hours of operation from, I had asked for, from six PM to two AM, being that it's more for a social environment after work versus during the hours of work. But I'm gonna go ahead and, if there, if there is an issue with adjusting those timeframes, at this time, I will accept those hours of operation. And that was all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker, please, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anybody else present who would like to speak in favor? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mayor. The young lady, could you come back up, please?
Yes.
I understand that the, according to Mr. Gumas, that the city has, or that normally hours of operation is from eleven AM, I mean, I'm sorry, nine AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday until twelve AM. You just stated that you wanted to amend the time, or change the time if possible, from six PM to
To two AM. And that's from, the hours from Saturday through, Friday through Saturday. Sunday will be closed.
Okay. So you really weren't needed during the day?
No, we did not request during the day.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Gumas? I, I understand that the, that this is a conditional use permit, and with that said, it's a conditional use permit, meaning council can always come back and change the conditions of the permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, let me ask you this. The stipulations, or the hour stipulations that the city has recommended, recommending for this site, would that apply throughout the city, or would it change depending on the location?
For these type of uses, while the majority of the requests have been in the downtown area, these conditions that are included are customarily have been applied throughout the city for similar requests that require conditional use permit.
Okay. All right. Compared to other neighboring cities, their hours of operations usually end at two AM. And I understand Suffolk is at twelve AM at this point, mainly because of some things that happened in the past, okay? All right, with that said, you know, we want to attract business here, and the, a type, the, the type of facility that the young lady wished to, to have in this city, again, it's a conditional use permit. You know, I'm asking council, you know, can we consider letting this young lady open until one AM on Thursday and Friday, and leave it at eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, giving her an opportunity to show us that she can manage things, and would not have any problems? And again, with it being a conditional use permit, we can come back and revisit this thing in maybe six months, to make sure that the young lady complies, correct?
I want to be careful how I respond to that, and I may ask the city attorney to, to provide assistance. The city council certainly, by a, a measure, can bring back items for reconsideration. I'm not aware of an item such as a conditional use permit coming back at your request to be reconsidered. In the past, if the conditions have not been met, city council may revoke a condition, but typically, you have not reconsidered a previously approved request without a requested amendment from the applicant.
Great. Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we allow the young lady to stay open till one AM on Friday and Saturday, and to twelve, I'm sorry, to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday. That's my motion.
Council Williams has made a motion to amend the hours to one, one AM, Thursday
And Friday.
And Friday. Do I hear a second?
Thursday and Friday, she open Saturday?
How about Saturday?
Mayor, could we hit?
Friday night, I'm sorry, Friday night and Saturday night. I apologize.
Friday, Friday and Saturday is already at midnight now, so you want to change Friday and Saturday?
Till one.
One AM.
Yes.
Leave Sunday through Thursday as is?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be the motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor, could we just clarify the motion, so that, that we've got the proper procedure? Is the motion to approve the conditional use permit with amendments to the conditions?
Yes.
So the, the motion would be to approve conditional use permit 2021 zero one seven with conditions, but amending condition number thirteen for the, for the hours to allow operation to one o'clock AM, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would be the motion.
Correct, so that's the motion. Do we have a second to Council?
A second.
Williams' motion. Councilman Ward?
Second.
Councilman Ward has seconded. So we have a motion and a second. We're now opening up for comments. Councilman Goldberg.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, we have had situations downtown in that area where we've had these types of bars before, and we had trouble with them on the hours because of decibels and, and, and other things going on, and crime, and some other things that happen downtown. I am not in favor of, of having it at all in the downtown area. I would offer a, a substitute motion for denial.
Further discussion, Councilman Fawcett.
I always like to give some opportunity, but in this case, I don't think it's the proper place and time for the hours. We haven't been successful, not to say it couldn't be, but I will have to, if Mr. Goldberg has made a substitute motion, I'll have to second his motion to deny.
Councilman Ward?
I want to, can I make a statement?
Oh, sorry, you had your light on. I didn't know if you wanted to speak. That's okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor? No, not yet. Not till we finish comments. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, the only thing, I've just, my question would be, where, and that, we have had others to come before us with the same request of changing the hours from, this has been, I would say, within the last year, where someone came and requested to stay open at two o'clock, and it was denied because of the president that was sitting. So at that time, I was told, if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, you, someone can correct me, is that that's been the policy, where, and that we're treating it all alike by the hours that we are passing to, or have, or these type of activities downtown.
Vice Mayor, it's my understanding and discussing staff, we try to be consistent in how we apply our, the requirements on these items of similar nature.
Okay, so that, that's my concern, is the hours, if you have something in place that we have set precedent with others, we cannot, I don't feel right to deviate from
that we have set precedent with others, we cannot, I don't feel right to deviate from, to do one and have, unless you go back and change the other ones, that's my whole problem.
Councilman Goldberg, did you want to speak again?
No.
I was just looking at your light, that's all. I'm, I'm looking at lights now, so if your lights are on, figuring you want to speak.
I would like to speak.
Councilman Ward?
Understand the fact that we said we go to 12:00 o'clock, and that happened, we was there maybe a year or so ago, but when, you know, we're just asking for another hour, and it's a conditional use. So that means that we start giving people who are responsible a chance, I don't see what one more hour would do, I mean, we're giving her freedom to do it at 12:00, so while we can't do it, try to, she can do another hour, I mean, I don't understand that, but you say, you had this before, so it's not like saying that we have a lot of business open on downtown Suffolk anyway, so I, I, I don't see that at particular time right now, that, that one hour would hurt, and it's already conditional.
Any other comments?
Mayor? Mayor? All right, you have your different restaurants that's open downtown now, and they are allowed to stay open until 2:00 a.m., and that's by right. That's by right. I don't think we're asking council to, like Councilman Ward says, it's just one hour, that's it. That will give the young lady time to get her patrons out of the building, get it closed up. At, at, at this point, she's going to have to shut her operation down at 11:00 in order to get everybody out by 12:00. So we're only talking an hour. And here again, we want to attract businesses downtown. What are we doing? While we causing people to have to go to other cities? When, again, we're only talking about one hour.
Any other further discussion, and I have, if not, I have a question from our city attorney. The original motion was to approve the conditional use permit as presented with an amendment to the hours.
Yes, that was the original.
And that received a second. So rather than a substitute motion, do we just need to vote that motion up or down, which in essence will defeat the motion, rather than have, than vote on the negative, if that makes any sense?
So at, the, the opposite of approving the CUP would be to deny it. At this point, it's the, the first motion wasn't to approve it as presented, so there is the opportunity, if the first motion didn't pass, someone could make a motion to approve as written, so the hours stay the same, or could make a motion to deny. The substitute motion seems to do the opposite of that, and would, would deal with both questions at the same time, so if they vote to, if the vote passes to deny this permit outright, which is what the current, what the substitute motion was, then neither motion could be made, because the decision would be to deny the CUP.
So, but right now, it's just a motion to deny?
Deny.
So wouldn't we just vote on the origin, on that motion, and if it's defeated, then then it would open it up to approve the conditional use permit as presented, and we could discuss the motion as it is?
So if, if the denial does not pass, then you will go back to the original motion, which was to approve with amended hours?
Okay, so we need to do the substitute motion, so just so everybody understands?
Yes.
Okay, so the substitute motion was by Councilman Goldberg for denial of the amended CUP, not the original CUP?
As, as I understood, it was denial, and the maker of the motion, you can correct me, it was the denial of the whole CUP. So there would be no CUP granted? Yes, yes.
Oh, you don't want to grant them a CUP at all? Wait a minute, so your amendment, your substitute amendment is to deny the CUP as presented by staff with the original hours, is that correct, with the extended hours? Okay, you don't want to do either one of them? Okay, so, okay, that's where I'm confused, okay. All right, well, I'm glad we're getting this clarified.
I just wanted to know.
Okay, so the substitute motion, just so everybody's on the same page. What do you think?
Could I ask a question?
I'm not rushing you.
Wait a minute, so the substitute motion, to ensure that I'm on the same page and explain it correctly, your motion is to deny the CUP in its original form?
Yes, period.
Okay, so if we agree to deny it in the original form, then the CUP will not happen. So if we vote against that, then it would revert back to Councilman Williams' motion to amend the CUP, at which time we will vote on the amended part, since we have a first and a second, that can be voted against, and then we revert back to our original CUP, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, okay. So, the Councilman Johnson?
I want to speak, please. Mr. Gumas, what, what Deech is asking us for is not a restaurant, correct? It is a nightclub with the potential of selling, serving food? I don't see a kitchen in the plans.
It, it, they do intend to serve food, but it, it's classified under the zoning code as a nightclub bar.
Do we have other nightclub bars in the city, in the downtown core, that are, that are presently working?
We have approved others, I don't know if, if, what their status may be.
And we've approved others with, we've approved others with the same hours that we're offering her in the conditional, in the conditions, correct?
Correct, the city council has customarily established those hours.
Yeah, I'm getting back to Mr. Williams stating that this, we have restaurants that are open until 2:00. A restaurant, a bar, a restaurant, and a, and a nightclub are two different things, in my view. So, Mr. Williams, that would be the reason that we not, wouldn't allow it to 2:00? All right, thank you, man. I just want to spit my piece out here, guys. We, we're trying to encourage growth in downtown Suffolk. I'm not a hookah lounge kind of guy, I don't smoke, period, and I don't want to be around smoke, but I think there might be enough people to support a facility like this in downtown Suffolk, whether we like it or don't like it, it's not my cup of tea, I'd rather see a whole string of restaurants through there. But this young lady wants to make a go of it, the, the small business in America today, so many of them fail, I think we need to allow people to make their own mistakes and make it happen when it can happen, and I, of course, wish you the most success in the world, you might turn it into a teahouse if a hookah doesn't work. But my point being, I, I'm not in favor, and I don't think our city is in favor of extending the hours to 2:00 in the morning, I, I don't think that we're of that mentality, and I, I think you're inviting trouble. Now, whether you can make it without those hours, that's for you to decide, but as it could, as was proposed to us, with the conditions on it, I, I was ready to vote in favor of that. I cannot support 2:00 in the, 1:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the morning, and then let you make it work and hopefully work well. That corridor, though, is very important to us, because we're getting ready to spend a whole lot of money to make that entrance to our city a vital and, and, and very, very unique situation with the new things that we're going to put forward. So we want you to be successful when you go on that corridor, so, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that's what you intend to do, and that you could do it. So with that being said, with all these things we've got on the floor, I would be in favor of approving it as written, and then if it works very, very well, if she can come back to us at some point, and we can talk about what we want to do, but I can't agree with the, the original motion at this time. So I'm willing to make a motion to accept it, if that's to deny.
Well, we've got a motion, we have a substitute motion.
Okay.
We can't have another substitute motion, right? That's what I thought.
Come on, Williams.
Okay, so let's just kind of back up. We've got a motion and a substitute motion. The substitute motion was to move for denial, and it was seconded by Councilman Fawcett. If you vote yes, then this CUP goes away. Under any circumstances. If you Correct. If you vote yes, the Councilman Goldberg's motion at this point, then the entire CUP goes away, even if it's in original form. So by voting no, if that's what you choose, then it will revert back to Councilman Williams' motion with the change in hours. We can, we have a second to that. We can vote on that, and if that gets turned down, then we're just back to square one again, which is the original CUP with the original hours. Is that correct, City Manager? I mean, City Attorney? Okay. Okay, so we got a motion on the floor from Councilman Goldberg, a secondment from Councilman Fawcett to deny this CUP. Is everybody prepared to vote? Yes, vote means it's over. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
No.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Ward?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
Mayor Duman?
No.
The motion fails by a vote of two to six, with council members Butler Barlow, Johnson, Ward, Williams, Vice Mayor Bennett, and Mayor Duman voting in opposition.
Okay, so now, the substitute motion has failed, so now we will be considering the motion made by Councilman Williams, which is to extend the hours, is to approve the CUP with the amendment to the hours. Do we have any further discussion of that motion?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to withdraw my motion, and, and like to move that we approve it based on the current motion and approval by the planning commission.
So you want to withdraw?
Yes.
Your substitute, your amended motion, and make a motion to approve the CUP as presented?
Right.
Do we have a second to that motion? Have a second?
For the withdrawal, the original person who's seconded has to agree.
Say again?
The original second needs to agree to withdraw.
That would be Councilman Ward, or you're all right with Councilman Ward withdrawing his amended motion? Okay, go ahead.
Since Councilman Johnson said something, and it just hit me when he said, he planned, he said, "We got a plan to invest a lot of money downtown." So what hit me, well, we can invest a lot of money downtown, I don't know what type of entertainment going to come, so we'll be back here again, and we're going to tell the people that they can have clubs at 12:00 o'clock? I mean, you know, I understand, with the lady now, whoever comes, they're going to try to get an early start. What I'm saying now, here we go, and I understand investment, so I hope that investment, when we talk about this investment, we be more openly to try to change some of the laws that we have, because if you want to build a downtown, you can't handcuff the people trying to invest some money or try to get some business. Because, I mean, I'm like you, I don't go out to clubs like I used to, but 12:00, we can't even have New Year's Eve. It got to be closed. I'm just saying, let's, let's look at where we going with this city of Suffolk now. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to say that because you did make a good, we are investing downtown, I hope that in the future, we start to open up a little wider and get entrepreneurs a better quality to make some money, because, like you said, Mr. Williams said, at 11:00 o'clock, she got to start closing down, clear the bar and all this, and back in my time, and y'all might laugh, but the party didn't start until 11 or 12. So, and that's both sides, I don't care who you are, even in Suffolk, it didn't start until 11 or 12, so we had to do your thing first and whatever, so let's not play that game. I'm just saying that, I hope we can open up a little better for the people that are trying to make downtown, to call it not ghost town, but downtown at a certain time. I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Williams for approval of the original CUP as presented with a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Again? I think you've reached your time limit, all right, one more, Councilman Williams?
Yes, 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 ma'am. I just want to piggyback off what, what Councilman Ward said, and, 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 you know, Councilman Johnson, you're right, we are investing a lot of money in our downtown corridor. However, like Mr. Ward said, Councilman Ward said, you know, we want to make it attractive, we don't want to handcuff the people when they come to our city who want to have a business downtown. You know, we, we, it's time for us to open up. Look at Norfolk, look at Portsmouth, look at Chesapeake, look at all the other cities, our neighboring cities that's booming downtown, and that's what we want, and we're not going to be able to do it, shutting the doors and handcuffing people before they even get started. That's just, that's something we, we, again, like Mr. Ward said, you know, we're going to be revisiting this again real soon with what we have going on downtown. And if we continue to handcuff our people prior to them even, they're not even considered coming downtown Suffolk, they're not going to do it. I wouldn't do it, and I love this city, but if I'm going to make some money, then I need to be able to compete with other neighboring cities and other businesses in neighboring cities, to make my business a success, and we're not going to be able to do it at 12:00 and 11:00, it's just not going to work. That's all I have.
So any further discussion? Okay, I'd just go to make a few short comments myself, to Vice Mayor Bennett's point, over the years, we have been very, very consistent to limiting the hours to midnight, and on some business that I consider to be much less objectionable, if you will, to what this is, as far as a bar and a nightclub. And we did that for several reasons. I totally agree with you that at some time, we may wish to extend the hours downtown, but I think that time is not quite here yet, I mean, we need to ensure that we have the lighting, that we're able to provide the police presence after midnight, those are some prime considerations. I have a few questions as far as the ability to do the sound abatement that they're speaking of, but it's in the conditional use permit, so that's something they're going to have to be well aware of, and as far as some New Year's Eve and that sort of thing, if I'm not mistaken, there is a possibility to do a special event permit for particular functions during the year? Would that be correct? I think that's a possibility, so if there is this opportunity to do that, you would be able to do that, and then Ms. Gillis also, you know, we wouldn't change anything, but she would absolutely have the right to come back and ask for an amendment to the CUP, you know, once time goes by, and if it seems like things are changing, and we're in a good position, and there haven't been any issues down there, then come back to this body and ask for an amendment to the CUP, and if it seemed appropriate, we would be able to do that, and then maybe some of the other businesses would follow suit. But we have to be somewhat cautious in that what we do for one, we should do for all, so are we prepared, if we extend the hours to 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m., then we should be prepared to do that for every single business downtown. And I think before we do that, we need to be fully cognizant of the issues it may or may not create, and how, what kind of effect it's going to have on our staff. So it's my two cents worth, and we have a motion for approval of the original CUP with conditions, and a second from Councilman Johnson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
abstaining.
Councilmember Goldberg?
No.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six, with Councilmember Goldberg voting no, and Councilmember Fawcett abstaining. Six to two.
Okay, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance vacating and abandoning Okay, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance vacating and abandoning two portions of Station Drive, which are contiguous to property located at 3169 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 25, parcel 30, STV 2021-002. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Okay, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, item 16 and 17 on the agenda here are companion items, uh, which will, uh, we will have separate public hearings on. At this time, Bob Gumas, interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, and good evening again. Presented for your consideration is a request to vacate two small portions of Station Drive. The subject property, Public Right-of-Way, is located within the Planter Station Development and is zoned B2 general commercial and is associated with a recent City Council approval for a change in zoning from CP Commerce Park to B2 central, uh, uh, general business. As a reminder, and to help you better understand this request, you will recall that the subject lands were to be developed as a single-family residential building lots, and they would be, have frontage on an internal public road system, that this loop road was intended to intersect with Station Drive at two locations. As depicted here in the, uh, the detailed drawings, and as such, the subdivision plat that dedicated the portion of Station Drive included to what I refer to as the returns for these intersections associated with the future development and dedication of this internal loop road that was illustrated previously. However, now that the adjacent property will be developed as a commercial shopping center rather than a residential neighborhood, there is no need to maintain the two small portions of public road sections. And accordingly, the property owner desires to have the city vacate these two small portions of public right-of-way. As presented, the land will be conveyed to the property owner and will become part of the property for the shopping center. This is a public hearing, after which I and other staff members are available to address your questions. And as the manager noted, and I will also note, that there is a companion item on this matter, um, on your agenda following this matter. Both, again, are public hearings and require separate actions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of?
Scott Overton, 111 Pelican Reach, representing Planter Station LLC, where the property owner and Mr. Gumas' summary of what we're trying to accomplish is certainly enough, I don't need to add to that, but I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, the motion being ordered. It was the pleasure of council, Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval? Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Nope.
Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed between the City of Suffolk and Planter Station LLC for two portions of Station Drive pertaining to street vacation request, STV 2021-002. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Bob Gumas will provide the staff Good evening. As previously presented, this is a companion item to the matter which you just acted upon. And whereby this request, the applicant has, um, after the vacation, has requested that the city also approve a quitclaim deed which pertaining to the subject lands, which would vacate any additional interest that the city may have over the lands that were vacated as part of this, um, previous vacation of the public right-of-way. So this action would allow for any interest the city may have to be vacated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anybody to speak in favor of? Hearing none, do we have anybody to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, the motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our last public hearing is a resolution to amend the Suffolk Downtown Master Plan, a component of Suffolk 2035, a vision for the future City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan, CPA 2021-001. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as you recall, at your retreat back on September 10th, we, uh, provide, staff provided a presentation on the downtown, uh, master plan. At that time, uh, we informed you that there was some revisions that we need to bring back to you regarding a festival event. Uh, with us tonight, we have Deena Holt, Business Development Manager, who will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Um, I'm here this evening present on an amendment pertaining to the downtown master plan. As each of you recall, the downtown master plan was adopted to address key issues within the core downtown area. One of the items addressed in the plan were three key sites proposed for redevelopment opportunities. Those sites being a festival and market square location, a library square location, and a mixed-use residential historic rehabilitation area. The amendment being presented for you, um, for discussion is for the event, uh, festival event and market square concept. As described in the downtown master plan, the festival event and market square concept addressed the need for a location that would allow us to be able to have festivals, live music events, and create an area that would attract residents and visitors to downtown. The original location selected for this space was at the southern end of the parking lot located behind the courthouse, where a permanent stage, as you'll see, as letter F, would be located, that would be utilized during events, and we would close off a portion of the parking lot, which would be E, um, by using portable barriers during these events to set up for vendors, um, and the space would allow attendees to bring chairs, uh, or blankets and enjoy the concerts. One of the problems with this concept is we would be taking away parking during the events, and secondly, people were going to be sitting and standing on a paved surface, which gets extremely hot during the summer months. Um, and remember, during the week, um, we would still be utilizing the area as a parking lot. Although the Main Street Festival area was designed to be in the parking lot, um, the consultant saw the benefit of the park, which was located behind the courthouse, which, or beside the courthouse, which is letter A. Um, and they stated in the plan for that to be called, uh, Courthouse Park. This could be used, um, for smaller events, such as a beer garden area, or to host events such as an outdoor, um, art show. The city would like to maintain this area as the Courthouse Park and continue to use it for events like we do with the Taste of Suffolk and in any other smaller events that we may have, um, throughout the year. It will also be a focal point while not in use, um, as we continue to have the, the trees wrapped in colorful lights. With that background, I'm here tonight to ask for the amendment of the downtown plan that would move the festival and market square redevelopment area outlined in the current plan to the corner of South Saratoga Street and West Washington Street. This amendment request comes after the events of August 4th of 2020, uh, when the tornado touched down, destroying buildings located at 113 South Saratoga, um, the former Knights Finance Building, as well as 219 West Washington Street, uh, which is the former Brandon House. While the, um, city, with the city being able to purchase these buildings, we feel as though this would be a better location for a festival event space. As you can see, the original elements of the space remain to include a stage area, um, and vendor and truck, uh, or food truck locations, and we also will be able to gain, uh, parking spaces at this location, location not taking away as per the original design. So as you see right up along, um, the fence and then along this area. We feel the gateway entrance would be a great, um, design element that we can use to showcase upcoming events. And a green space also needs to be a centerpiece of downtown because that is what makes a downtown great. And as you can see on this slide, the new proposed location allows us to have green space component, um, which will be an asset to our citizens, especially the ones that are living in the surrounding lofts. They'll be able to, um, utilize the space for outdoor picnics, to bring their dogs out, um, also to throw the ball with their kids, um, while the site is not being used for an event. This area can also be utilized by private groups who would like to plan events outside of what the city will be offering. Um, here's an aerial view of the site showing how it looks coming down West Washington Street. Um, to note, we do plan to utilize the Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage at the beginning so we can make sure the stage is set up in the appropriate location. As you can see right now, we have it set up right there in the corner. Um, if staff feels as though the stage area needs to be relocated, why, by us using the mobile unit, we'll be able to move this more easily. The Planning Commission at their 20, September 21st meeting voted eight to zero to approve this amendment, um, with the conditions as presented by staff. That concludes my presentation, and I'll gladly take any questions that you may have after the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Hannah. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak at this time? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, the motion would be in order. It was the pleasure of council, Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, uh, because of circumstances, uh, with the hurricane and the tornado that came through, we now have this opportunity to move this, uh, to this facet, this area, which I think is a much better area, uh, for the, for the festive park. And with that in mind, uh, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg. Councilperson Barlow.
Second.
And a second. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Um, I would like to say that, uh, this is a very, very welcome, in my opinion, very, very welcome addition to our downtown master plan, and it is unfortunate that several buildings were destroyed by, uh, some weather conditions, but I guess they say there's a silver lining to every cloud, and, but, you know, I am, you know, more than excited to see this project come to fruition, because it does provide a permanent venue with some green space that will be able to utilize, be able to be utilized by all our citizens at some time, even if they're coming downtown just to visit, get something to eat and go to the park. So, uh, wholeheartedly support it, and we have a motion in a second, and if there's no further discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Uh, we will now move to ordinances. Yes.
Just one. Building that you will be tearing down, the, um, Brandon House building, that will come down, uh, the shingles on that building, I've been told, are fairly rare, and they might be worth some money saving. I don't know how, what you do about that, but you might check into that to see if there's some value in those shingles, just as a thought. That's what I've heard, I've been told. Just thought I'd pass it on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to ordinances, and we do have an ordinance to amend section 86-604 of the Code of the City of Suffolk concerning designated public streets approved for golf cart use within the Arbor Meadows Military Acres Community. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As happens from time to time, Public Works has received their requests from the Arbor Meadows neighborhood and the Military Acres neighborhood to have the, uh, permission to operate golf carts. Uh, we've reviewed those and decided to bring those to you as one item. In July, so again, COVID has slowed us down just a little bit in review, we did receive the application on these two, from these two neighborhoods, uh, to Public, Public Works. Part of that includes a petition process in which the neighborhood has asked, do they support that? Out of 158 total property owners in that commu, those two communities, 122 of them supported that, so we got about a 77% approval rating. We did do the review of the crashes on the highways in that area and found there were no reportable accidents in that area over the last five-year period. Before you, is a list of the impacted neighborhood roads, again, part of them are in Military Acres, part of them are in Arbor Meadows. Uh, the Military Acres neighborhood, if you're aware, is bounded by Ferry Road, Knots Neck Road, and Bridge Road. It actually is interesting that only the back section of this was requested, so the front piece up there next to the highway did not ask to be included in this request. But again, you'll see on the, the map, the proposed locations in which we would sign this as being an enclosed golf cart neighborhood. Likewise, Arbor Meadows- Likewise, Arbor Meadows fronts on Knots Neck Road and there are three streets that enter that neighborhood. And again, it's an enclosed neighborhood and the locations for those are also shown on this map. Just a few highlighted photos, kind of general conditions. Generally, these are 80, 22-foot wide streets. These are older neighborhoods, so they do not have curb and gutter. They're generally a very gently sloping curb, I mean, shoulders situation in there. Again, just a few views. Arbor Meadows is very similar and as far as their street layout. So just kind of in general, this is one specific area in there, but this same information was pretty much similar throughout all the neighborhoods. Generally, the traffic volumes in all of these streets is relatively low. The speed limits were actually very good to be in a neighborhood. As you see, the average speed was 16 and a half miles an hour. The 85th percentile was 20 miles an hour. And in today's world, it's actually very rare to find a neighborhood that our speeds are that low. And again, this is a 25 mile an hour posted speed limit in these neighborhoods. So the recommendation from our Traffic Engineering Division tonight is that after having reviewed this, they find no evidence to suggest that permitting golf carts in these two areas would be detrimental and endanger the safety of persons utilizing the road. I do note however for you that Ferry Road and Knots Neck Road are not included in these two, in these recommendations. That goes back, both of those are posted at 35 mile an hour speed limit and we have concerns that these would be, could be safety issues. The neighbors were asking originally that all that be included in one comprehensive approval. And again, we couldn't find we did that. We did have some conversation with the neighbors though. However, should they be able to work out something with an adjoining private property owner to be able to cross Knots Neck Road and/or Ferry Road and then have a path through private property between the two neighborhoods, Public Works would be amenable to actually posting golf cart crossing locations on either one or both of those. But again, we just had concerns about approving and recommending approval, the use of golf carts on those high-speed roadways, which is outside of our policy. And with that, I believe I could take any questions you may have. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. A motion being ordered. With pleasure, Council. Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. First off, I'd like to say, Robert, thanks for finally getting to that application. I've had several inquiries in that neighborhood and I've talked to those people several times. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Okay, a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Do we have a second? Councilman Johnson.
Second.
A second for Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I have one question.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the chance of someone trying to use that, use the road going across at 35 miles an hour of doing that? I have not, I mean, what's the chances of that?
My, my personal belief is it's highly likely.
Yep.
But it would be a violation of law, but then it also goes back to enforcement.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lewis, if I could ask you one question, and this is just a question and Councilman Goldberg brought it up. But what do we do to inform the residents of both of these communities that they need to be off of Ferry Road and Knots Neck Road and also what the violation could entail? Because I agree, it's going to be prone for that to happen and that would be a serious safety issue.
Yes, sir. In light of this, generally, these areas are only enforced by complaint. So I think generally, and I'm not sure that the police department has ever really had any enforcement action in any of these neighborhoods that we put in there. But again, it would generally be by complaint. So based on this, if City Council were to pass this tonight, we would certainly reach back out to both of these communities, both in written and in personal contact to share with them what council's direction was tonight and kind of a summary of those issues and some possible solutions, again, to help address that.
And I have one other question. If it turns out that there are repeated instances of that happening, which does create a problem, do we have the ability to withdraw the golf cart permit that was granted?
Yes, sir. The city attorney can help me with that. But I believe that most, all of these have an opportunity to be revisited should we have violations.
These, these streets are listed in the ordinance, so you can always bring back an ordinance to remove the streets from the ordinance.
Okay, so in essence, we could do it, but you'd have to...
You'd have to amend the ordinance. It's not, it's not a permit.
You can't revoke it. You can amend it to remove all the streets.
Remove all the streets.
Yes.
So if you don't have any streets, then you...
Can't have golf carts there. You have to have the street approved in order to drive a golf cart on it.
Okay, just a different way to say we did it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Fawcett, a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to resolutions. Our first resolution is a resolution adopting the electronic participation policy for the City Council of the City of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the city attorney, Mr. Hutchins will provide the overview on this policy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Council had asked for our office to draft a resolution and policy to allow City Council members to participate in City Council meetings electronically. Basically, what that means is that a City Council member can participate in a meeting somewhere other than in council chambers. The general rule is that in order for City Council to have a proper meeting, everyone needs to be in the same location. But the General Assembly had amended the code a number of years ago to allow City Council members for either health reasons or for a personal matter to attend electronically, but it requires that the body adopt a policy. And so the policies you have before you really didn't take any creative license with this. It's, the code says what the policy is supposed to say and so we've put what the code says into the policy. The basics for when someone can attend electronically are if the member has a temporary or permanent disability or medical condition that prevents their physical attendance or they need to care for a family member who has a medical condition. And why these, why I'm limiting, talking about these three is, we'll talk about in a minute, that the, what happens or how many times you can be absent or use this policy is determined on the reason. And then the, the last one is for a personal matter. But that requires the person that's going to attend electronically to identify the specific personal matter. You can't just say I have a personal matter. You have to identify what it is. On that one, the member is limited to 25% of the meetings held each year. Assuming we don't cancel any meetings, that would be a maximum of six times a member can attend electronically. Keep in mind though, that if we cancel a meeting, the number starts going down. So you can't necessarily count on having a full six times because there are times when we cancel meetings. It does require a vote by City Council to approve it based on the quorum of members that are present in council chambers. If council makes a motion to not approve it, there has to be a reason specified for not approving the electronic participation. And if three members are attending electronically and those three members are in the same room or they, then that room needs to be open to the public. Otherwise, the member can attend in a private room, hotel room, their home, whatever. The one requirement is that everyone in council chambers needs to hear that person's voice. They don't necessarily have to see them on video, but they do need to hear their voice. And they do need to be able to participate verbally in votes. And that's the basic, basic framework for the rules. I'll be happy to answer any questions if City Council has any questions about the policy.
Okay, resolution's been presented for council's consideration. Motion being ordered, or any questions or comments?
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Question, just on doing it electronically, how would that be a setup for people that need to do it?
Right, so I'll have to turn to the city manager for that because that's the technical issues within this room and I don't really deal with those. So I'll turn that over to him.
I spoke with staff today on that element. And of course, we all have city cell phones and there's an app that we can apply to that. I would go deeper into those details, but my support staff is better at that. But we do have the mechanism to have the remote.
Okay, that was just my concern, make sure that, and that they have some special thing at a person's home or wherever they're located. Okay.
It's, it's easier when it's voice only.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mayor. Actually, I had some reservations with the 25%. And William, he kind of touched on that. Because when I was doing the math, I was like, wait a minute, that's six. Six opportunities that each council person would have in case something came up. And to me, that was kind of a high number. However, what, what William just said, that, you know, that number could change because we could cancel a meeting. So that would, that would bring down the amount of times that, it doesn't necessarily have to be six. And technically, it's, it's actually 12 because you're talking six for a work session and you're talking about six for council meeting. So it's technically 12 meetings. But, you know, I'm okay with it, but I just wanted to let you know. I wanted to go on record because I just had reservations about that, but I'm all right with it now.
Questions, comments, and still looking for a motion? Councilman Johnson.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, do we have a second? Councilman Fawcett, with a second. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next resolution reverts back to, was originally on our agenda, our consent agenda, was a resolution adopting the Department of Parks and Rec master plan. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. During the City Council's October 6 regular session, the Director of Parks and Recreation provided a staff report on the city's Parks and Recreation's master plan. Staff report included completed activities within the previous master plan and proposed activities included within the updated master plan. Review and updating the master plan is a necessary element for the Department of Parks and Recreation certification. And as part of that is requested that City Council pass a resolution in adopting the master plan. Subsequent to our presentation, there was some brought to our attention under Chapter 6.2 Natural Resources, subsection 6.21 Inventory of Natural Resources. We had had some language in there that was based more on assumptions and, or on some assumptions. And we have laid in front of you some amended language from the DICE. Now, when I talk to that, the wording there and what we want to do is, of course, and I'll read the revisions here, but we felt that we took some language from the comp plan that had maybe three pages of explanation and summed it up in a paragraph that made, shed light or unfair light on our agricultural community. So what we want to do is clean that language up. And so how we've done that and staff review of it felt it was appropriate also. The City of Suffolk, this is a paragraph or the first sentence. The City of Suffolk has been a longstanding agricultural, has a longstanding agricultural heritage. We had sort of made peanuts as our primary crop, even though it's a very important crop in the city and we have a lot of heritage with peanuts, but it's not our only crop. So we wanted to clean that up and clarify that. We did delete Paragraph 2 and 3. And we're in there speaking of impacts to waterways, impacts pollutants from agriculture, which is more of a, that's not an overall overarching theme. It's an assumption that occurs occasionally. So we removed those two sections and added, "As the city revisits its future comprehensive plans, it will become increasingly important to explore the ever-evolving dynamic between rural land development, open space, and recreation needs for its citizens." And I think that's more of a fair statement than how we characterize the agricultural versus recreational needs of the city. And we took a look at that and we went back and we revised that language and as you have it in front of you. And staff and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, I think everybody's digesting this review.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilman Goldberg.
I just want a kind of an explanation of, I mean, what are, what are we saying here? What are we doing here? Under the comprehensive plan, we talked about agricultural lands. Were we trying to deny that herbicides are used on agricultural lands? Are we trying to...
No, I don't think we're trying to deny that. What we're trying to do is just balance our statement. Our statement was, as you read those two paragraphs, previous paragraphs, it gives an overarching theme that herbicides are definite over all of our land uses at our agriculture. And that may not be the case. Yes, is there potential impacts from herbicides and like? But is it assumed that every field has an impact? And the way it's written compared to making open space all recreation, it seemed to be an imbalance in how we phrase that. And that's all we're trying to do is try to balance our statements.
Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
I'd just like to say, I think that the master plan for Parks and Rec is excellent and I appreciate all that Parks and Rec does for the city. Our open spaces and our parks are very important and important to all of our citizens. And I like the master plan. I honestly like the master plan. I don't think there's any place in the Parks and Rec master plan, however, to be negative and critical of agriculture. And I think that a more balanced statement regarding agricultural lands was appropriate at this time rather than the negative statement that was included. But again, I like the master plan. I love our parks and appreciate everything that Parks and Rec does. So thank you.
Thank you.
So basically, what we're requesting as part of this resolution is to amend, adopt the master plan with this language being amended in Section 6.2.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to amend the master plan with the changes as noted. What is she, Councilman Fawcett?
I don't, I don't have a problem with any of this. I think we go ahead and put the language in. I think it's suitable, so therefore I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Councilman Johnson.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I do have one comment. And to Councilman Goldberg's point and also to Councilperson Butler Barlow, I mean, the statement does, in my opinion, need to be amended because it does kind of shade a negative light on agriculture. And City of Suffolk peanuts are not now our most prominent crop, I don't believe, not since we got cotton and some other things in. But to Councilman Goldberg's point, I don't see why we couldn't add, one, two, three, four more words to the final statement there. And that's where, "As the city revisits its future comprehensive plans, it will become increasingly important to exploit the ever-evolving dynamic between rural land development, open space, and recreation needs for its citizens." And I would add, "while promoting environmental stewardship." So we're still going to be concerned with the environment, but it's not an overwhelming negative. But there is, as Councilman Goldberg said, there are issues we run off in there. So regardless of what we do and we need to be aware of our environment and how it's going to affect our waterways and our quality of life for a lot of our citizens. So I can't make that change, but if somebody would like to make a motion to amend the amendment by adding "while promoting environmental stewardship", I would put it out there.
Mayor, I'd go ahead and... I'd go ahead and make that, since I made the original motion, I'll go ahead and amend the motion to have that verbiage.
And we have a second to the amended motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
She just kind of rattled that off there.
Okay, the motion is to amend the Department of Parks and Rec master plan as noted with an additional six words, while promoting environmental stewardship.
Thank you.
While promoting environmental stewardship, which would just be tacked on to the last part of the statement.
Thank you very much.
The motion, we have a second. Call for it.
Councilmember Butler Barlow? Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no staff reports this evening. We'll move on to motions, and we have a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 3, 2021, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the namesman Parkway Venice Pasture Road Intersection Improvement Project. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second, and I would just say that we need to make sure we have as much advertisement we can before the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow? Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg? Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, November 3, 2021, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
For approval, Councilman Fawcett. And a second from Councilman Fawcett, any discussion in motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow? Councilmember Fawcett? Councilmember Goldberg? Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett? Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? And if so, please read the guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Dooman. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the policy, services, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Tushar Murgaji, and 6301 Wayleyville Boulevard, representing self regarding traffic on Wayleyville Boulevard.
Yes, councilmembers, Mayor Dooman. Does anybody know the name of the last victim that hit and run on Manning Road? Mr. Chandler probably knows, but I'm talking to you guys. Anybody knows? Anybody? Okay. Does anybody know his age? This is relevant, this is relevant. Okay, nobody knows his age or the victim's name. His name was Christopher Stein, age 35. They did catch the guy that did the hit and run. You know, he's old enough to be my son. Okay, I feel sorry for him and his family. This is the Suffolk News Herald. How many of you read it on a routine basis? Seriously? Everything there is mentioned, it's in the front page as to what is happening. It's free, you don't need an iPad or iPhone or PC, anything. I walked to the corner store just to get it free. Okay, you don't even need a car. But thank you. Anyway, I made my point. The point is that nothing has been done again. Okay? I'm going to pick on a few of yous. Please don't take any offense. This is the facts. Mr. Williams first. Mr. Williams, I did call you on January, some times in January, is that correct? Okay? And you called me back within a day or two. Fair enough, you got all my information, my phone number, everything. I don't know what was accomplished. You probably did a Google search to find out if I was a criminal. But that's my speculation, I'm sorry if I mentioned that. I apologize. But nothing has happened. You never did talk to me, nobody called me from the police department, as far as I know. Fine. The same complaints I was talking about, you know, speeding in Wayleyville. Mr. Chandler, Officer Chandler? I watched your conversation last time you were here. We were gone. You did mention about writing 201 tickets, I believe, in Holland between the Route 58, is that correct?
Mr. Murgaji? Mr. Murgaji, please direct your questions in your.
Oh, okay, I mean, I didn't want to discuss.
The chief can speak to you after the meeting.
Okay.
And you can ask him whatever questions you want.
Okay, okay, okay. So I have requested through FOIA, how many tickets were written in Wayleyville in the last six months, whatever? I haven't still got an answer from him or from the FOIA people. They said, no, it's not a FOIA problem, but we will forward that request to the police department, which I am hoping they did. Mr. Chandler just talked to me earlier, he said he doesn't have the info, but he will later on, which is fine. I just want to know, how many tickets have been written on Route 14 in Wayleyville? How many arrests has been made in, let's say, in the last six months? Forget about nine months, okay? I just want to know. Writing tickets, okay, let's compare apples and oranges, okay, for a change. Oranges, that's Wayleyville. Apples, that's Route 58, four-lane highway divided with median. Of course, you're going to get more people to write tickets today. What are we? We are two-lane highway, we are a village, that's what they call us, a village, okay? Two-lane highway, no median, federal accidents. Do you know, Mr. Williams, sir, how many federal accidents have happened on that route this year, not counting October?
Mr. Murgaji? Mr. Murgaji, this is your time to speak. You speak, we'll listen.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right. Do you know, sir? Okay. All right, I made my point. The point is, they bring the police there, they're there for a day or two, and then they're gone. Yesterday, I was walking, I walk in my driveway every evening when the sun is about to set. And this minivan from North Carolina, because I know, comes from the sheepyard probably, anyway, he almost hit my neighbor. I wish I knew the license plate of the neighbor, that she or he was turning left right by the fire station to go to Wayley Street. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. And he just passed her, boom, like that. If she had been a foot, maybe not even a foot, if she braked and stopped, if she had been a little bit ahead, she would have been really T-boned. My point is, nothing is getting done, okay? Now, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to pick on Mr. Fawcett, sir. Is that okay? If I call you Mr. Fawcett? Councilman Fawcett? Yes?
You can speak to him, yes.
Yeah, you mentioned that in the last meeting, while I was gone, you mentioned that you drove in the New England area in the East Coast, right? And the traffic was bad and all that? That speeding was normal? Okay, fair enough. I traveled all over the country, I know what you mean. Welcome to the club. But the analogy is wrong, okay? The analogy is wrong, because you're saying that everybody is doing it. So everybody is jumping the well, we should jump in the well.
Mayor, the time's expired.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murgaji, your time has expired. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Ellen Saunders, 617 West Riverview Drive, representing the Western Tide Water Free Clinic, regarding expression of appreciation for the city's support of the Western Tide Water Free Clinic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council and staff. As you've heard, I'm Ellen Saunders, and I'm here to thank you on behalf of our patients and our clinic, and to provide you with a brief update. The City of Suffolk has invested in the clinic since our inception in 2007, for which we're extremely grateful. Thank you for our full request allocation of $185,800 from the operating budget for 2122 fiscal year. We're also extremely grateful for your COVID relief funding during the 2020-2021 fiscal year. This support was critical to allow us to stay open throughout the pandemic, as well as to ensure that our patients who were diagnosed with COVID had a 100% recovery rate, and that our staff and volunteers remained safe. On average, 60% of our patients are from the City of Suffolk. Through September 30 of this year, we served 744 city residents through 5,304 visits, and we expect to serve almost 800 by the end of 2021, including one City of Suffolk and three Suffolk Public Schools employees. As you know, our patients are extremely ill, and having a health home allows them to receive the consistent care and support they so desperately need to improve their health and their lives. This would not be possible without you. Patients like DS may not be alive today if not for your support. DS first came to the clinic five years ago because she was turned away from multiple doctor's offices because she had no health insurance. She had previously been diagnosed with painful rheumatoid arthritis and colon cancer. She desperately needed to be in a doctor's regular care. DS searched online for help, finding information about the Western Tide Water Free Clinic, exactly the help she needed. Two years after finding her forever health home at the clinic, she became eligible for Virginia Expanded Medicaid, and clinic staff helped her enroll. Thankfully, she was able to remain at the WTFC because the clinic had become a hybrid clinic, specifically to serve current patients who were newly enrolled in Medicaid, as well as those who remained uninsured. DS could continue to be cared for by our nurse practitioner Regina Jones for her rheumatoid arthritis management, and was also referred to a gastrointestinal specialist for her colon cancer, where she received life-saving care. In her time at WTFC, DS has utilized almost all of the varied clinic services, including medical, dental, and specialty care. She could not be more grateful for the caring, high-quality services she has received. Recently, DS expressed how amazing she thinks the clinic staff is, from Edie's generosity and helpfulness at the front desk, to Terry's kindness helping her navigate entering and exiting the clinic with her walker, to the overall compassionate treatment she has received from everyone at WTFC. She said there is not a staff member at the clinic who doesn't go above and beyond for every patient they serve. In her words, quote, "WTFC is a great facility that makes you feel wanted and loved and takes their time to truly provide awesome medical care," end quote. Historically, we have been very dependent on volunteers, but the pandemic unfortunately caused a huge decrease in volunteers. Thankfully, we are now beginning to see them return. Volunteers are the lifeblood of our clinic, we could not do what we do without them. We currently have 65 volunteers from the City of Suffolk, including seven board members. The leadership of WTFC completed a new strategic plan in the fall of 2020, and we are actively implementing its initiatives, focusing fully on recruiting new patients who need our services, as well as exploring expansion of services specifically in dental and mental health. We are seeing an increase in patients returning to the clinic. We know the need is great, especially after the challenges of the past year. Just like other businesses, we feel the effects of increased supply costs that have not returned to pre-pandemic levels, specifically in our medical and dental departments. The financial support of this council and the community allows us to keep our doors open and continue to be here for those who desperately need our services in our 2,200 square mile service area. We are grateful that you continue to invest in the mission of the Western Tide Water Free Clinic. I invite each of you to visit the clinic when you can and when you feel comfortable doing so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Garrett Waters, 105 Babtown Road, representing self regarding current events.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of city council, my name is Garrett Waters, I reside at 105 Babtown Road in the beautiful city of Suffolk, Virginia. A mandate is a noun. It's an authoritative command or instruction. No one in authority can give that instruction. There is nothing signed into law to mandate anything. You are governing through press releases, not on the basis of law. You're culpable for the negative health consequences by allowing the continuation of city employees being subjected to exposure to known cancerous agents. City workers that are tested are not presented with vital information. There is no informed consent sign. There is no acknowledgement that the PCR tests are not used for the diagnosis of disease, that these PCR tests are not approved for use. There is no logbook to write down the lot numbers of the test. There's no ingredients of the test being presented to employees. The employees do not sign any logbook. There is no system in place for any accountability. 10 to 15 years from now, an employee may develop cancer, have low sperm count, or suffer miscarriages due to the known exposure that the chemicals in the testing contain. There is nothing presented to the employees that delineates the PCR test being unable to differentiate between influenza, COVID, and also gives false positives for HIV. And this is just the PCR test. The alternative to testing is to get the vaccine itself. Here are some questions. If Pfizer is approved, why is Moderna and Johnson-Johnson still available? Why do folks have to sign an informed consent if they decide to get vaccinated? The answer is, folks need to sign an informed consent because the vaccines available to prevent COVID are experimental. The vaccines available to prevent COVID do not allow your body to produce natural antibodies to COVID. They cause your body to produce spike proteins. Spike proteins are not antibodies. Other ingredients listed in the Pfizer vaccine include titanium, graphene oxide, luciferase, which is a glow-in-the-dark, pardon me, glow-in-the-dark enzyme produced in fireflies, plants, and fish, and that is used in bioluminescent research. It also contains aborted fetal cells. In an email from a senior Pfizer director of worldwide research, Vanessa Gelman, read, "From the perspective of corporate affairs, we want to avoid having the information on fetal cells floating out there. The risk of communicating this right now outweighs any potential benefit we could see, particularly with general members of the public who could take this information and use it in ways we may not want out there." They want to hide the truth. Pfizer uses embryonic kidney cells harvested from an aborted female baby in 1973 that has produced a continuous line of cells. This is public deceit, and now they want to force it upon children. You are allowing this to happen to the children and citizens within your borough, to the children and citizens in your city. You've become complicit in causing negative health consequences and outcomes to the citizens of Suffolk, Virginia, USA. I stated to all of you at a prior council meeting that we will see an increase of 40% in child morbidity between the ages of five and 12 years old. We'll see an increase of paralysis. I stated a timetable of events to occur between mid-September and extending through December. Unfortunately, this is already occurring. Who is the medical professional that has adopted this regimen? Who is the medical professional that has enabled otherwise healthy Americans that reside in your borough to be subjected to an experimental vaccine that still does not allow your body to produce natural antibodies to COVID? There was no one here to present anything from COVID from the state health department this evening. Has anyone bothered to find a lab anywhere in the world, let alone the U.S., that has an in vitro sample of COVID to compare under electron microscope? Has anyone bothered to find a lab, any lab, that has a sample of the Delta variant? Have any of you asked what the minimum thread count of the mask needs to be in order to mitigate the spread of COVID? Have you asked your doctor? Have you asked the health department? Have you done anything to ensure the health, safety, and freedoms of the citizens of Suffolk? Just recently, a child in Suffolk Public Schools was beaten and kicked. This child was assaulted. It was filmed and spread about the internet. The parents were not notified. The police were not notified. EMS was not notified. Fast forward a couple weeks, and there's a minor fender bender on school grounds. The police were notified, EMS was notified, and parents were notified. What about the child that was violently assaulted? Who stood up for her rights? Who stood up for her health? Who stood up for her safety? Being silent is being complicit. I have another prophecy for you, and I hope that it will not materialize here. I have another prophecy for you, and I hope that it will not materialize here in the city of Suffolk. The next chief of police may very well have the initials Suffolk Police. Aside from the vaccine mandate for city workers, this will cause a mass exodus of law enforcement.
The time's expired, Mayor.
That's done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Emotep Mohammed, 110 South Fifth Street, representing South regarding police reform.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Emotep Mohammed. I'm a member of the Virginia Organizers. Thank you, City Council members Barlow, Lou Ward, Vice Mayor Bennett, and Fawcett for meeting with us. We would still like to meet with those City Council members we haven't heard from, City Council members Goldberg, Johnson, and Williams. We've done some research using Virginia's new open data portal. It is compiled by Virginia's Department of State Police and data analysts and reporting team. The data consists of stops from Virginia law enforcement agencies from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. This is a result of Community Policing Act data collection. The data shows two things. Black drivers in Suffolk are 150% more likely to have their cars searched by Suffolk Police Department than are white drivers. 5% black drivers versus 2% white drivers. Black drivers in Suffolk, on Suffolk, excuse me, are 70% more likely than white drivers to be pulled over for equipment violations by the Suffolk Police Department. 17% black drivers versus 10% white drivers. This is, this is clear evidence that African-Americans are being targeted. A strong civilian review board would address these problems. And of course, if nothing is done, this data would be swept under the rug, and everything would go back to normal. That normal is violating African-Americans and brown people's rights. That normal consists of assaulting African-Americans and brown people's rights and, in some cases, killing them with no consequences. Mayor Dooman, you mentioned in the newspaper last, newspaper article last month that City Council would discuss establishing a civilian review board at the City Council Staff Retreat. What was said? We want to see City Council discuss publicly at a City Council meeting and give a public, and give the public an opportunity to comment on establishing a city, a civilian review board. We want to see this on the City Council agenda. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
We will now move to new business. Madam Clark, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Uh, no, sir. I don't have any additions to tonight's agenda.
All right. At this time, we'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Diana Klink has any announcements. Oh, Tim. That's okay.
Sorry about that.
Not that you're, not that you're second string or anything.
Okay, that's all right. I'm on the playing field. That's important there. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We have a few events to note to help kick off announcements tonight. With Halloween coming up on Sunday, October 31st, it's worth noting that as per city code, trick-or-treating is for those ages 12 and under, and that trick-or-treating in Suffolk ends at 8:00 that evening by city code. Now, there are a multitude of events and activities sponsored by Suffolk Parks and Rec, Suffolk Tourism, and Suffolk Public Library for all ages to help celebrate fall fun leading up to and on the big night, including some of the following. Now, Suffolk Parks and Rec, we hosting several drive-through trunk-or-treats this Saturday, October 23rd. They'll be held at the Creekside Recreation Center, the Whalerville Recreation Center, and at the East Suffolk Recreation Center. All three events from 6 until 7 that evening. Now, drive through any of the noted parking lots while you and your family are dressed in your best costumes and enjoy seeing the festive trunk decorations. You can feel free to decorate your vehicle as well. As you cruise by the rec center, staff will safely welcome you and provide a variety of goodies. It is requested that you take photos and capture all of the fun and post them on your social media pages using the hashtag SuffolkFrightNight. And Public Works also getting in on the fun. Are you haunted by litter? Then this cleanup event is for you. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is hosting a scary zombie litter cleanup on Saturday, October 30th from 3 until 4:30. Zombies will meet at the Morgan Memorial Library to sign in, pick up litter grabbers and bags. The cleanup will start at the library and then head toward Main Street, then loop back to the library. There will be prizes for the best zombie dress awarded after the cleanup. And again, some of the other events we talked about, some of the events and activities, you can find them. Handy Guide can be found on the Division of Tourism website. Visit SuffolkVA.com if you'd like to check it out and find all the great fun that's happening, again, in the city of Suffolk. And back to cleanup for just a second, another cleanup event also on Saturday, October 30th. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. till noon. The Nansman River Cleanup is organized by Keep Suffolk Beautiful, the Suffolk Nansman Chapter, the Isaac Walton League, and the Nansman River Preservation Alliance, and will focus on the downtown section of the Nansman River. Volunteers will be removing litter and trash from the wetlands and surrounding areas. Volunteers assisting with the land cleanup can meet at the Suffolk Shopping Center parking lot to get equipment and instructions. Volunteers with canoes, kayaks, or small boats are asked to meet at Constance Wharf Park and Marina. They'll have special equipment there to help the watercraft reach into the wetlands from the river. Organizers are also asking for businesses located on Main Street to help the effort by making sure their parking lots and dumpsters are cleaned regularly. The Suffolk Department of Public Works advises that a contractor will have a lane closure tomorrow. That'll be Thursday, October 21st from 3:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. in the area, including the 2,200 block through the 2,300 block of Holland Road, Route 58, east of Manning Bridge Road, for the installation of a waterline. This closure will be restricted to the eastbound right-hand lane for the noted time period. Motorists should expect potential delays and slow-moving traffic in that area. Other Public Work news, staff will hold an open forum design, an open forum-style design public hearing regarding the Pewsville area drainage improvements, Phase 2. Now, this will be on Tuesday, November 30th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the New Hope Baptist Church, which is at 4260 Pewsville Road. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public input on the proposed drainage improvements in the Pewsville area, which will be accomplished by installing a drainage trunk line down John Street from Town Point Road to the outfall at the end of John Street in Chesapeake. A stormwater pond will also be included south of Queen Street to help attenuate some of the flow going into Chesapeake. The stormwater pond will also provide some water quality credits for the project. Now, with a portion of the project along John Street being in the city of Chesapeake, it should also be noted that coordination between the two municipalities is required. Information on the project is available from city staff by request and can be picked up by appointment at City Hall. Also, you can find information on the City of Suffolk project website at the noted URL on your screen. And again, that event is Tuesday, November 30th from 5 to 7 at New Hope Baptist Church. Don't miss the opportunity to participate in the 38th Annual Juried Photography Exhibit at the Suffolk Art Gallery, which is open to all professional and amateur photographers age 18 and above. All styles of photography in which traditional, indigenous processes were integral in the creation of the work will be accepted. Call for entries runs through January 21st. Contact Suffolk Art Gallery to receive an entry form. City of Suffolk offices will be closed Tuesday, November 2nd for the Election Day holiday. Trash and recycling collection schedules will not be affected for that particular week. Residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the state call center at 1-877-829-4682 to find a vaccination location convenient to them. With that, I'll say good evening. But before we go, 757-514-4000 if you want to get connected with city services. And again, some of the social media outlets are pictured on the screen that we utilize to distribute information to our residents and business owners. And again, we already mentioned the number, but I'll mention it again, 514-4000 to get assistance, get connected with city staff, answer questions. We're there to help. Okay? Say goodnight to all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly.
Sir.
We'll now move on to announcements from City Council, and we'll start with Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank the mayor and also our Chuck Tuck School Board Member for attending the Civic League meeting on Monday night in Chuck Tuck, the Greater Oakland Chuck Tuck Civic League. We had some good discussions and a lot of good information, and always appreciate the citizens coming out and also appreciate the support from the mayor, so thank you. Also, would just like to commend the city manager and all of the staff for always being available and ready to answer a phone call or a text and trying to address some of the issues that we have in our boroughs. Always appreciated, always appreciate the patience and the explanations and the action that gets taken. I just wanted to publicly thank city manager and staff for all their help on all the issues that we tend to bring up. As always, I ask for everyone to be patient and kind during harvest season. There's a lot of agricultural equipment on the road. We're busy trying to get the crops harvested, and just take your time and, you know, hopefully wave and, and have a little bit of patience and respect for those vehicles that are on the road, and always appreciate that. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
And I'm going to be very brief as well. I'd just like to announce that the Holland Ruertan Club would like to have a Get to Know the City Night, October 26th at 6:30 at the Holland Community House, and they've asked me to come and bring a couple of staff members with me. We're fishing, so we'll see. But it's an opportunity for people in the Holy Neck Borough, particularly in the Holland area of the Holy Neck Borough and along 58, to come, have questions answered, bring your concerns. Let's talk about the future of what we want to see Holland become, or what Holland is. I think we'd like to talk about solar farms a little bit, the 58 project, the several things the people in the community, and it's going to be very friendly, but the community has questions. And so, we've put together this night to help answer some of their questions, and that's what we're all about, so look forward to it. And if you'd like to have questions answered in the Holy Neck Borough, Holland Community House, October 26th, 6:30. But I go to bed at 10:00, so keep that in mind. But with that being said, that's, goodnight.
Thank you. Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. Just, I only have one item tonight. I want to thank the Peanut Fest staff as well as the Ruertans out here in Suffolk for going out and have a great festival and also a good shrimp feast. They did a lot of work out there, and I want to say thank you to all those volunteers that were out there. See you on the next meeting.
Done. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief. First, let me thank, I'd like to thank Al, Mr. Lewis, and his staff for the shelter on County Street. The residents love it. Thank you for providing that. Also, Al, if you would please, and I know we've talked about it, but the citizens over in the Saratoga area are still dealing with that speeding issue. With that, I'd like to say goodnight. Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, a couple of things. One, a couple of committees that I've assigned to was the Art League. Art League is doing great. I want to let you know they're working hard under the leadership of their chairman, Charlene Blair, doing a great job with her, Chanel Blair, doing a great job with that. Economic Development Meeting this past week, again, the group that's been appointed there by this council is just excellent, and they do great work, and I wanted to pass that back on to you, Mayor, and to, and to others. This week, we lost a great, a great leader in our country, Colin Powell. I've studied him over the years. He was a great leader. He was just a fine individual, fine man, and we have really lost a, really a great, great leader in our country. And I do offer to ask everyone who's listening to be safe over Halloween if you're out trick-or-treating. Please watch those kids that are out there and make, just so that they be safe, and check the food that they get. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I, I just, the audience to, and some of the, read Psalms 35. It's a couple of things going on. It's not true. Some of the social network about my business, but anyway, like I said, read Psalms 35 because I am not going to sit here and deal with social network. I don't even get on it, so just read that. I attend the Peanut Fest, and I want to also mention that home-going of Miss Annette Ruffin, 38 years, Secretary of the Oak Road Baptist Church, who was a jewel in the church, the community. She was a very spiritual woman that, you know, she, she will be missed. And I want to mention about the free clinic. All the accolades for that free clinic, we invest well in that. They do a great job. I have somebody that I know tend that, go there and get the medicine, so I think that it was a great idea, and I'm so glad that it's in the city of Suffolk. Also attend the Senator Warner, he had his engagement at Oak Road Baptist Church coming. Some of the officials were there, very informative. Attend that, a couple of officials that we know and former elected officials there. Redistricting. Redistricting means a lot, I've been involved 10 years ago or more, and I just hope that we take this opportunity serious, not for just us as an elected official, but this goes on for 10 years, and some of us might not be here, but we can make sure that the community is balanced and the people that who might want to have an opportunity to sit here have a good opportunity. Suffolk is different 10 years ago. Census states that, the numbers state that, so as this body of City Council, I hope we can do a good job in drawing our city properly and fair, because it mean a lot, not only me, but I think it mean a lot for the people of Suffolk. Al, I normally don't do this, but I, I've been thinking about Pewsville, and I want to talk to you and Mr. Lewis. I'd like to know, I'm sorry I could have, I was running there, didn't do it. I'd like to know the paper streets and the dead ends, and I'd like to know from dead ends in the paper street, who owned the property behind it to why it's streeped? Because you got these streets, I have a, I have something I want to discuss with you and Mr. Lewis about, and hoping that that could somehow help some of that flooding going on. It's just not that just the city of Suffolk, maybe we can partner in with some people or some developers. I just want to ask you that question. I don't want to say it now because I'm, I don't know if I'll be totally wrong, so I will discuss that with y'all guys anytime, and I don't normally say that I could wait and told you, but I just want to let it know openly that I got something I'm going to try to do with, because the paper streets a lot, and some of the detours, and we get hit up for people want to build and they can't build because certain reasons, certain things. It's just like what Councilman Johnson said, you know, it's a different Suffolk, you know? We're investing, people investing houses in these communities where they wasn't before. So, we just can't tie their hands and won't be able to invest in our city, invest in the community, you know? I mean, it's so proud, 20 years ago, when you go to Huntsville, and you see Huntsville now than 20 years ago, when they put 16 new houses there, a whole different community, changed the whole attitude of the whole community. So, I know what can be done. So, I wanted to talk with you and Mr. Lewis about that. We're going to sit down and, you know, next council, I said, well, it couldn't happen, but I want to find out, is there any possible way that we can think ahead of things and stop just looking at it like, well, you know, no, we do it. We on council, let's do it. Then again, I'm going to say again, read Psalms 35. Those who are listening and those who hear can read Psalms 35, because I'm not going to entertain certain things about my business, what I do or how I got to make things happen. I'm bigger than that. With that, I say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be, try to be very brief. I'd like to start out by saying to the manager and to Mr. Lewis, thank you very much for coming out to Lake Kennedy with me and the neighbors over there about the flooding problem that they were having, and the stuff that you were finding, that causing the problem, and that's what we had thought about that day that we were there. We felt like that's where the problem was coming from, so I'm glad you were able to go ahead and address that, so I really want to thank you, and I got called- go ahead and address that, so I really want to thank you, and I got calls that you all was over there doing some work on it, so I do appreciate it. But with that being said, I was over there too this past weekend, and we need the street sweeper to go through Lake Kennedy and East Suffolk Garden. All those drains are pretty much, drain, the slopes are pretty much filled up, and I think that runs down into the drop-ins, so I think we need to have the sweeper to go over there, and that would help periodically doing that, keep some of that stuff out of the drains. Also, I would like to say that I wear paint, go paint this month for breast cancer for the ladies, and I strongly support that, so I've been really supporting the ladies with go paint, so that's the reason why I've worn paint for the last two council meetings, to show my support to the ladies with their concern with breast cancer and asking them to please see their doctor and take the mammograms and things they need to do. And with that, I would say good evening.
Well, thank you. I'll also try to be brief this evening. Peanut Fest, Shrimp Feast, I want to thank everyone who came out to Shrimp Feast on Friday. It worked out very well, being on Friday rather than Thursday. We had a really good crowd, probably between 2,000 and 2,200 people, maybe. It was a very controlled crowd, and couldn't have been more pleased with the turnout or the weather. We did get a little precipitation on Saturday and Sunday, but I understand it was still a very successful event. A lot of folks went out on Sunday. We had the Law Enforcement Memorial Service on the 13th of this month, which had been postponed from earlier in the year because of COVID-19, and it's always a solemn occasion, and I think that's, I guess, my 11th or 12th, 11th or 12th ceremony in a row, and it's always a time to pause and reflect and recognize and honor those law enforcement officers that had passed away in the line of duty, but also, just as importantly, to recognize the job that our officers are doing every day in today's atmosphere. And I want to thank the chief and his force. I mean, we do have an excellent police force, and I want to thank all the men and women that put the uniform and badge on every day. Thank you very much for your service. I also want to recognize the passing of Bobby Nelmes, who was from Chucka Tuck, originally from Chucka Tuck, started serving in the Chucka Tuck Volunteer Fire Department when he was 16 years old, and served for many, many years, and then served with the Nansman Suffolk Rescue Squad as a Chucka Tuck resident, you know, back when I first moved here. I hadn't been here that long, but it's been 40-some years now. It was a long time before I knew that there was another department, another fire department, another Chucka Tuck Volunteer Fire Department in the Nansman Suffolk Rescue Squad. You know, I didn't, you know, I didn't even think about it. That was my fire department, those were my rescue people, and that was our community. So I know he'll be sorely missed by his wife Liz, his relatives, and everyone else who had the good fortune of knowing him. And on a positive note, I'd like to also mention the recognition that was given to Ms. Oprah West for her work as a charter member of a mega chapter Chi Eta Phi sorority at a national conference that was in Maryland, and that Chi Eta Phi is an organization of professional nurses and nursing students founded in October of 1932, when black people were not allowed to join predominantly white professional organizations and sororities. And Ms. White served as a mentor for so many individuals back then. She taught for 24, 25 years and was instrumental in her work with that organization, and she was recognized for that on a national basis. By having seen her lady, I served with her husband Clarence in the reserves for, for many a year, and Clarence was, Clarence was the mess sergeant back then, and I can tell you, we had the best mess hall in the country, and I still miss some of that food. You know, they call it something on a shingle in the morning, you know? We used to have that and whatever, but, you know, Clarence has unfortunately passed, but I did want to recognize Ms. West's contribution and what she's done. I want everybody to have a safe Halloween. We actually have an election coming up, I believe, before our next council meeting, so get out there and vote, and I beg you, before you go out there and vote, know who and what you're voting for. It's not about D's, R's, I's, or anything else. Look at your incumbents, see what they've done since they've been in office. See what they haven't done since they've been in office. Those challenging those incumbents, know what their platforms are, know what their qualifications are, and make an educated vote. Yes, your vote does count, but only if it's an educated vote. So please take the time to research, you know, all the candidates before you cast your vote. And with that, I will move to my quote of the night, and that's from Winston Churchill, who has a lot of good quotes, and that is, "Criticism may not be agreeable, but it is necessary. It fulfills the same function as pain in the human body. It calls attention to an unhealthy state of things." So little criticism, nothing wrong with it, brings attention to those things that we need to pay attention to. So with that, I'll say good evening and ask for a motion for an adjournment. Councilman Fawcett. And a second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
This meeting stands adjourned.